Motion carries. I thought I pressed the button. Okay, in the first report. But now I'm getting an echo. Testing one, two, three, four. Yep, I'm getting an echo. Saying one, two, three, four. Nope. Okay, well, press on. First report, item three, sub one, 2022 Tax Rate Workshop Presentation. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Russell, Senior Financial Analyst.
Good afternoon, Members of Council, Acting Mayor Reese. Today, we're going to present to you some idea of what we anticipate the 2022 Property Tax Bylaws can look like. So just to get started here, as soon as I figure out why my mouse doesn't want to cooperate. Here we are. Thank you. So today, we're going to look at a number of things. One, how tax assessment impacts property taxes, what council's options are with respect to setting property taxes. And basically, there are two elements there. The first one is step one, council sets the annual revenue requirements. And this is done through the adoption of the Financial Plan Bylaw. And step two, council sets the tax revenue distribution. And this is done through approving the various tax ratios. Okay, so now. Oh, here we are. Sorry for the delay there. Okay. So with respect to property tax, we've given you a really, what we hope is, is a simplified yet direct explanation of how property taxes impact various, sorry, how property assessment impacts various people's property taxes. So the basic process is you get, we get assessed value from B C Assessment. Council will set the tax rates. And then the two are multiplied against each other to generate the total amount of property taxes. And then that bill is sent out in late May or early June and due at the end of June. This chart outlines the impact of changes in assessment on property tax. And really, to make it quite simple, it's, if your, if the change, if the change in your house price is less than the average, then your taxes are likely to go down. If the change in your property assessment is higher than the average, then your taxes are likely to go up. And if it is similar to the average, then there's a good chance that there's no significant change in the tax that you are going to pay. So that's the basic outline that we're looking at there with respect to assessment. What I would comment on is there, there's a slight discrepancy within your report on page, whatever that would be too. There's a chart there which shows average assessments, this page. And those numbers are slightly higher than the numbers that you see in the charts later in, within the report. The rationale for that is they're taken on different bases, which were done at different times. The first analysis that you see is based on July assessment, July to December combination. And the other ones are both December to December. So my apologies, that was an error on behalf of finance, I should say myself, in compilation. So it was pointed out to me, and so I thought I would point it out to you. And we're going to continue on. About, well, later today, I gather, I hope, you're going to give, I was gonna say fourth reading, but I guess fourth reading is not really a reading, it's an adoption. You're going to adopt the Financial Plan Bylaw. You gave three readings to it about two weeks ago. And at that time, it was determined that the tax revenue requirement for the year would be $34,165,000. So that's step one of the two-step process to determine how much, determine what the tax rates are and how much, therefore, how much people will pay in tax. So that total amount of $34 million is an increase of 6.7% year-over-year from the $32 million required the previous year. And then that is offset by non-market change, approximately 3%. So we come down to a number whereby we anticipate that the increase required from existing properties is approximately 3.7% year-over-year. 3.76, I believe it says there. So that's how much we anticipate total tax revenue requirement will increase from one year to the next. The next slide that I will show you here shows a combination of assessment, tax rate, and tax distribution by property class. What we're doing here is we're taking the assessment that we received from B C Assessment. We're taking that $34.165 million. We're applying it against the existing, sorry, I won't say the existing tax rates. We're applying it against the tax rates calculated based on the existing tax ratios. Okay, and so that gives you an idea of where taxed, who is taxed, and how much tax we get from the various groups. And as you can see quite clearly, the vast, vast majority comes from residential, with the second largest amount coming from business. And those aren't likely to change as we move into the future. So that's what the assessment base is, what our existing tax distribution is, and how much tax we get from per tax, sorry, per property class. Okay. So the second step in this two-step process is to determine what the tax revenue distribution is. Tax revenue distribution is generally referred to as the tax ratio. So these are ratios between the different tax classes and the residential class. Currently, the district has tax policy. And our tax policy states that we want to maintain competitive Class V, which is light industry. And we want to maintain business class, which is Class VI, at a level that would encourage new business or new business investment. Okay, so when we look at the current ratios, the Class VI ratio we have currently, and the Class VII ratio is 2.5, sorry. Sorry, the Class VI and VII ratio, I apologize, is 2.57. And that is below the B C average. The B C average is 2.72, if I'm correct. Our property, our port property is capped at the legislated amount of $27.50. Our utilities are capped at the legislated amount of $40. And our major industry, the tax ratio for major industry is set at ratio to equal the B C average for Class IV. So within the levers that council has to move at this point, that is the policy. This is where the current ratios are. And when we look at this, the next slide will show what the resulting tax impacts are using those ratios, the existing ratios, and the existing assessment. So what we're seeing here is 5.1% for average residential. And that's made up of 8.2% for single-family. And just under 1% is 0.9 for strata. And a business average of 2%. Those are the various tax incidences and the amount of tax average change in property tax year-over-year for those various classes. And that's without any changes in the existing ratios. So now what we want to show you is what would occur if we were to change the ratios. So now we're going to show you here is the first column is the residential, sorry. Not the first column, let me, let me start that again. The first line is no change in the ratios. So average residential will be 5.1%, average business will be 2%. If we were to decrease the business ratios, the ratio for Class VI, to 2.50, that would reduce the year-over-year tax for businesses to 0%. An increase residential from 5.1 to 5.9. If we were to go the other direction by approximately the same amount, what we would result in is if we were to increase the ratio to 2.65%, sorry, 2.65, it's not a percent. We would see that the municipal tax for residential would fall to 4.3, and the business tax would increase to 4.4. So they basically would end up paying the same amount year-over-year increase. So we wanted to display that because we wanted to show council what the options are and what the impacts would be for both business and residential if they were to change the ratios as they sit today. So at this point, I'm going to stop, step to my next slide, which is where I pause for questions and discussion. I will comment that if council has a desire to see what the impacts of either of those two changes in the ratios are across the various classes, we do have slides that depict that also. So if you do have a desire to see that, just let me know and, and I can share that with you.
Thank you. And just before I go to council, the one thing that jumped out at me was the change in the assessment of light industry, which seems to have almost, in fact, over-doubled since previous year. And I know that's B C Assessment Authority, we don't have control over it. But do you have any information around that to let us know what happened?
Thank you for putting this on B C Assessment, because that gets me a little off the hook when I say, no, in fact, I don't. We looked a little bit into, into it, and it appears it's a combination of things. There were some new light industry that came on stream, so non-market change, new development. And there was also just a very significant increase in the assessed value of existing businesses across the board in that, in that property class, it would appear.
Thank you. Counsel? Everybody still thinking? Seeing nothing at this point. Mr. Russell, you can proceed on.
Okay, I guess the proceed on is pretty straightforward from my perspective. What we are asking council to do at this point is to recommend any changes that they may wish with respect to our tax ratios. Staff recommendation is that the ratios be maintained at the same level that they are in 2021. If council would like to discuss that further or recommend changes, that'd be great. And if they don't, well, then, then you don't. So I believe that there is a motion to consider that the tax ratios as presented in this report be used to calculate the 2022 Property Tax Bylaw. So I will put that back to council for their discussion.
And just to be clear, is it possible you could put a slide up with, with those ratios? Because there's several different tables in the report. And so just so we're all clear on which one we're looking at.
This slide here shows the municipal ratios in Squamish as compared to the B C average.
And is that helpful for council? That's just dealing with ratios. Leave it to council. And so any comments or questions, council? Counselor Stoner?
Thank you, through the chair. So just to clarify, we, in this scenario, haven't proposed any changes to the tax ratio. But light industry is seeing a significant tax increase as a result of their increase in property tax assessment. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And can you just clarify what falls under the utilities category?
Primarily linear utilities, so power, gas, natural gas does not include our own utilities, as they would be exempt as municipal. So primarily, it's going to be power or hydro, whichever term you want to use, natural gas. And utilities may include linear such as railroad tracks, possibly.
Anyone else from council? If there are no other questions or discussion or comments, somebody want to put forward a motion? Mary Elliott?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Seconded by Counselor Stoner. Counselor, any discussion? Counselor Anderson, Counselor Stoner?
This is not really a comment towards our presenters and the Finance Department, but for the whole municipal strategy, if you like, and the District of Squamish. But it appears to me, it strikes me that we are disproportionately relying on residential in our percentage of burden. We are below the B C average for major industry, light industry, and business. And I just wonder, and I'm just amusing, if you like, whether we're a community that is a little bit out of balance. And this is really kind of a district economic strategy in this realm. But these numbers leap out at me that we are, we are off the B C average in those three, four categories. And I would wonder in the long run if this is sustainable. We are reliant on the residential sector for our property tax burden. And we have no major industry being taxed at this time. But our light industry is also below B C average. Of course, this is percentage of burden. We've gone through all the calculations, but really, in the end, it amounts to, we don't have that tax base that we had once had in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner.
Thank you, through the chair. Thanks to staff for bringing this forward. I think keeping on track with the ratios as presented helps us continue to further our policy objectives. In particular, keeping the light industry and the business tax rates and ratios, sorry, the tax ratios below the B C average, I think keeps us being competitive, especially alongside our neighboring communities in the corridor. That does put a little bit more of the tax burden on the residential area. But I think part of that strategy is that it allows us to continue to incentivize more businesses in that major industry, light industry, and business classes to come forward at a competitive pace. So I am confident in the budget that we'll be looking at for adoption this evening. And I think the tax ratios as presented distribute the burden of that tax request fairly amongst our community members at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. I support the direction that this is taking us, recognizing that, yes, indeed, we do have heavy reliance on residential taxation. And this increase in assessment that we've seen for light industry doesn't necessarily concern me significantly at this point. Definitely a figure that I think we, council, needs to keep an eye out next year to see where that goes next year and then determine if there needs to be a shift to ease the burden for light industry next year. But for this year, I support where we're going. Thanks.
I'll put myself on the list. I'm also supporting this resolution. And like Counselor Anderson, I did notice that, that we are more reliant on residential in this community than the B C average. And I think that highlights the need, certainly since I've been on council, to work on economic development, expand our tax base through business and industrial taxpayers to get them in, to try to level it out. We find ourselves without sort of the high-tax-paying types of industries. And yet, we still have a significant demand for amenities and services in our community. And without dumping all of that burden on the residential taxpayer, it's hard to balance it. So it does highlight, I think, our, our need for continued efforts in economic development and getting additional business and commercial taxpayers into our community. We, we started off, back in my first term, actually, we set the ratios. We completely reorganized how we were ratioing the taxpayers out here, spreading out the burden. And we wanted to be competitive. And so we went to the B C average for commercial and for light industrial at that time. And we put the heavy industry, actually, which at that time, with wood fiber closing as a pulp mill, we didn't have any, but we put it at 27.5, which was the port rate, the only other heavy industry in the community. We later, a few years later, changed that when wood fiber came on the scene, the LNG project, to the B C average, to try to be fair compared to other heavy industry in British Columbia. The, the commercial and the light industrial, you'll notice, is now slightly below the B C average in ratios. And that historically, I think, started a few years ago when we were trying to ease some of the burdens that were sort of hitting our local industrial and business community. And so we edged these ratios down a little bit. And as Mr. Russell points out, you have to be very, very cautious with that. Otherwise, it can quite significantly impact the residential taxpayer. But we've done that, and I, and I support leaving it where it is. And we'll just see how that goes. We are still subject to the vagaries of B C Assessment. And this time, it seems to have landed on light industrial. Previous years, they've gone in residential, for example, and they reassessed one subdivision and not the whole community. And we had no way of protecting that subdivision without changing the whole class for the whole community. But that's not the case this year. This year, it seems to have landed on light industrial. And so we'll just have to see how that goes forward in the community. But generally speaking, I am happy to support this. Are there any other comments from council? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Any opposed?
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Russell. Ms. Bakr. Our second sub item, sub two, is alternative municipal tax scheme. Mrs. Susan's joining us. The chair is yours. The floor is yours. I'm the chair. You can't have this.
Hi, council. My name's Rianne Susan. I'm the Director of Financial Operations at the District. And I'm here today to present on the 2022 Tax Scheme. So the purpose of our presentation today is to provide information to council about the alternative tax collection scheme, provide options and impacts for discussion, and third, to provide a recommendation for the 2022 Tax Collection Scheme. So for the community and council's background, I'll first review the legislation. So the Community Charter of B C legislates that a council may, by bylaw, establish an alternative tax scheme, which includes establishing discounts, penalties, and interest, and set terms which may differ between classes. In 2021, the district collected approximately $32 million in property taxes, $17.5 million in taxes for other agencies, and $15 million in utility fees. Approximately 65% of the collections are Class I residential, and 25% are Class VI business other. The remaining 10% are Class II utilities and Class V light industrial. During COVID-19, relief was provided to taxpayers by extending penalty dates. However, the following stayed the same in 2021. Utility fees and charges bylaw was adopted in December. The tax rates bylaw was adopted in May. Property tax and utility fee notices were issued in May. The property tax and utilities due date was July 2nd. The same homeowner and tax deferral programs were available. Interest charges started on January 1st of the next year, and the tax sale was in September. So what changed in 2021 compared to pre-COVID-19? Pre-COVID-19, the first 5% penalty was applied on balances outstanding after July 2nd. In 2021, the penalty date was changed to September 1st. Pre-COVID-19, the second 5% penalty was applied on balances outstanding after the last business day in July. In 2021, the penalty date was changed to October 1st. Pre-COVID-19, 77% of taxes and utilities fees were paid by July 2nd. In 2021, 59% of taxes and utility fees were paid by July 2nd. Pre-COVID-19, 97% of taxes and utilities fees were paid by December 31st, which is very similar to 2021, 95% of taxes and utilities fees were paid by December 31st. It should also be noted that in 2020, the tax scheme also provided relief to taxpayers due to COVID-19. If council wishes to review the 2020 tax scheme, I can do so during the discussion and questions. The next three slides represent, sorry, additional information we'd like to provide to council to inform the 2022 Tax Scheme. The residential class includes principal residences, corporate owners, investment owners, and second homes. The commercial class includes large-format retail, development, and investment corporations, and small owner operators. At July 2nd, 2021, 66% of the taxes and utilities fees collected were residential, and 42% were commercial. Staff estimate that 30 of the largest Class VI business accounts represented 70% of the dollar value of 202 delayed payments. The alternative tax scheme will affect the property owner, not the tenant or lessee, as it's the property owner that is taxed. The district's Economic Development Officer has advised that businesses in Squamish are continuing to face challenges due to COVID-19, which include, but are not limited to, supply chain issues, rising costs due to inflation, and staffing issues. The district considered a number of options for the 2022 Tax Scheme and are presenting two of those options. Option one, which is staff's recommendation, represents the district's general alternative tax general alternative tax scheme, which is in place prior to COVID-19. Under the general tax scheme, taxes and utility fees are due July 4, with a 5% penalty applied on outstanding balances after this date. An additional 5% penalty is applied on outstanding balances after the last business date in July. Option two represents if council chooses to implement the 2021 alternative tax scheme. Under this tax scheme, taxes and utility fees are due July 4, with a 5% penalty applied on outstanding balances after this date, and an additional 5% penalty applied on outstanding balances at October 4. The opportunity cost is estimated at $10,000, and the cash flow impact is estimated at a 5.3 million delay in when cash is received. Just for additional information, opportunity cost is defined as the estimated interest that would have otherwise been earned under the district's general tax scheme.
Can I just ask you to clarify if you could go back to that?
Yes.
Please. So on option two, the due date is July 4. First penalty is 5%. And is that if they missed July 4? So in other words, in July 5?
Yes.
What is the August 3 date?
The August 3 date? On option two, I apologize, that isn't... Oh, sorry. Through the chair. The... I think I actually made an error. I apologize. That's an error. It should be July.
So on option two, the first penalty comes into effect on July 5, and the second penalty, October 5?
Yeah.
Or October 4?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry, through the chair, if I may. Can you just go back to that slide there?
Yes.
Thanks. Sorry, what is saying here is the due date is July 4 in option two, but the first penalty wouldn't be raised until August 3. The second, which is 5%, would be the October 4. Whereas in the option one, which is reverting back to our original tax scheme, would be the July 5 is penalty one due date, and then the would be August 2 would be the second penalty date, just for clarity. Thank you.
Counsel Ben Gill, on this point?
Yeah, the cash flow impacts is...
I'll just interrupt you there. We'll get into questions on generally. I was just wanted to clarify that one point at this point, and then carry on with the presentation.
So it's the district staff recommendation that staff bring forward to the regular business meeting on Tuesday, May 3. Option one, which is the district's general alternative tax scheme, and the amended utilities rates bylaws for consideration of three readings. Next steps are: Staff to bring forward the alternative tax scheme bylaw to the May 3 regular business meeting. Staff will update the notices and systems. The communications team is ready to roll out our communications efforts to ensure the public is aware of key payment dates, penalty dates, and ways to pay. An insert explaining the key drivers of the 22 budget and five-year financial plan will be included, once again, in the property tax notices mailed to residents, businesses, and organizations. Staff will move forward with the property tax and utility fees billing process. Thank you for your time today, and I do apologize for the difficulty answering the one question during the presentation. And I will now turn this over to council for discussion and questions.
Thank you. Counsel Ben Gill.
Yeah, thank you. And appreciate the presentation. Just the cash flow, I know we have some big capital projects coming up, and lots of things. Is that cash flow an issue? Is that putting us in risk, at risk of our debt ceiling? Or, you know, is that, or we could totally handle that, and it's fine?
Through the chair, the 2022 cash flow can support the 5.3 one month delay.
Is that easily, or we can just kind of squeak by?
Through the chair, 5.3 million is not a small amount, so it can handle it, but not necessarily easily as, yeah.
Thank you. Would you mind putting the previous slide back with the one with the two options, just so we can verbally refer to that from time to time if we want to? Yep, that one. That's great. Mayor Elliott, followed by Counsel Stoner.
Thank you. One of the things I noticed in the staff report is that when we compared to the Resort Municipality of Whistler and the District of North Vancouver, their pre-COVID dates had a second penalty date in the fall, but ours have always been one month apart. And I'm wondering whether, you know, if those municipalities get better results, or why we wouldn't contemplate that same scheme.
Through the chair, the earlier the penalty date is going to be, the more advantageous for the municipality. You know, that their schemes would be abnormal. It is an alternative tax scheme. The charter recommends that you do only a one time. We don't know their results. However, my guess would be that they're not going to be as good in the fall as you would if you had a shorter timeframe and the penalty earlier on.
And then an option two, why extend the first penalty date by one month for the penalty payment? Why not keep it July, in July, and then the second one in the fall? What was the strategy in terms of doing a one-month lag instead of set up the next day?
Through the chair, for clarity, you mean for option two? Yeah. Option two is the 2021. I believe the reasoning behind why we went the month later was to give just that additional leniency. You know, honestly, I don't know that it had a dramatic impact, but at the time, that was council's wish, was to give at least the four weeks. But always traditionally, historically, the general tax scheme has been the next day, and then having just that 50%, and then the leniency for the next month. Thank you, Chair.
Before I go to Counsel Stoner, just that confused me a little bit. So in option two, the 2021 scheme, if you didn't pay on July 4 or July 5, the penalty didn't hit unless you missed August 3. So you got four free weeks in effect?
That's correct.
That's the thing that confused me, I think, in the first question. Okay. And so that's why the August 3 date is there.
That's correct.
Okay, I missed that. So council's clear on the difference between the two? Thank you. Counsel Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair. I was kind of curious, in the staff report, it said that it almost looks like it was residential classes that took the most advantage of the delayed scheme in 2021. Am I reading that correct? So there's a table at the end of the staff report that said, percent of the rolls paid by July 2 was only 57% for residential, and business was close to 70%. I was just kind of surprised to see that that amount of residential was taking advantage of this.
Through the chair, you are correct. That's what the table represents.
Okay. And then can you also just clarify the bullet point that's after that? It says, staff estimate that 30 of the largest Class Six business other accounts represent 70% of the delayed payments in dollar value?
Through the chair, yes, that's correct, in dollar values.
So 70% of the deferred revenue, we estimate, came from 30 of the largest businesses.
Through the chair, correct.
Okay, thank you.
That would be in that category, though, in that class?
Through the chair, it's Class Six Business Other.
Yep, okay. Sure. Counsel Stoner, then Counsel Ben Gill.
Do we have any sense, or do we have any, any way of knowing if those savings were passed on to the tenants?
Through the chair, it's the property tax, or the property owner that is taxed, and we do not have the data in terms of whether that's passed on to the lesssee or not.
Counsel Ben Gill.
Thanks. I think you mentioned this, but I'm not clear. Could we have a different scheme per class, or it's one scheme across all the classes?
Through the chair, it is possible that the legislation allows an alternative tax scheme to be different per class.
I guess the question would be whether we ever want that. Does that work involved? Counsel, any other questions? Or comments at this point? Counsel Stoner.
I guess I'll put a comment before there's a motion on the floor, just so my colleagues have time to think about it. I am leaning towards an alternative tax scheme that's slightly in line with option two, but perhaps looks at a penalty number one date of July 5, as we normally would have, but extends that second penalty date out into the fall to provide a little bit of leniency, but gets us a little bit closer on track, knowing that there's still some impact in the community out there, both for businesses as well as for residential folks. So that's kind of where I'm leaning, but curious to hear what my colleagues are thinking.
Thank you. And actually, that raises a question I had when I was reading the report. I mean, are there other alternatives that we might consider, you know, on these dates? And for example, when I was thinking about this, I wondered if we wanted to try to get back to pre-COVID dates, maybe over two years, as opposed to just doing it in one year. And so, for example, do staff have a comment on something that would, as Counsel Stoner stated, bring the first penalty to July 4, and the second penalty may stay at August 4, or October 4, or may go to September 4, something like that?
Through the chair, certainly, we can do whatever council wishes, but in terms of staff commentary, the trigger point appears to be that first penalty. So, you know, if we look at the collections patterns, what we'll likely see is the majority of folks will, or property owners, both commercial or residential, will pay based on that 5%. It was, it was basically that, you know, as soon as you have a penalty, the payment will come in. That additional penalty would be relief for those who truly need it, but they would still be impacted by that first 5%.
Counsel Herbert.
Thank you. The, in the staff report, that the graphic there that we've been discussing, the table we've been discussing, has that been done for, the date was July 2? Has it done for the penalty date, which would have been August, I think, in the last term? Just to sort of back up that point that you, that staff just just made around that being the first driver, the driver is that first penalty date? And I was just curious if the, what movement there would be in those percentages there.
Through the chair, can I just ask you to repeat that one more time, just so I make sure I give you the correct percentages?
Absolutely. So the table presented in the staff report was compiled using July 2 data, but the penalty didn't come in that day or the next day. You know, it was that following month. So do we have a similar table for what that looked like on that first day of, or just before the first day of penalty? I'm just curious how much movement there were in those, in those numbers to reinforce that point around the penalty driving the payment?
Through the chair, I do have a table that represents the collection of pre-COVID 2020 and 2021, after each, before each penalty date. So I think that could be representative. So in this table, it shows what was collected by July 3, pre-COVID 2020 and 2021, and then what was collected on August 2, which would have been the regular general tax scheme that the district had in place prior to COVID.
Thank you. Just digesting it now. So I'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Counsel, any thoughts, comments? We have a recommended motion, which is to go back to option one. Or we have other alternatives. Live group. Mayor Elliott.
I'm going to move the staff recommendation that we go back to our traditional tax collection scheme, starting this year.
Is there a second? Counsel French? Mayor Elliott, just to speak to it?
Even looking at the percentages, I think that it's the opportunity cost that I'm concerned about. And I think that it's not that people can't pay. I think it's people just holding on to their money as long as they want to, especially in the business Class Six area. A lot of those large, big box stores are the ones that delayed their payment, and why wouldn't they? So I think it's time to move back to the normal payment schedule. Those penalties are in place, but I think it still leaves room for those who might struggle a bit. And, you know, from what I can see, businesses are starting to return to normal levels, and it makes sense to me to fund our capital plans and not have to carefully manage our capital through the summer months when we have a really important capital plan that we want to get done this year. We strategically adopted our budget, so we had full 12 months, and I don't want to be delaying projects because we're having cash flow issues. So I think it makes sense to pull the tax in and follow the July and August penalty dates.
Thank you. Counsel French.
Thanks, Chair. We can't let COVID-19 run things forever. And after two years, I feel like we need to break away from the control that the virus has had over us, in this realm in particular. We understand the virus better now, and I think it's time for us to get back to the taxation life that we had before the virus. So putting these tax deadline dates back to where they have traditionally existed, it makes sense for me at this point. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Stoner.
I'll support the motion on the floor and reverting back to our original tax scheme, collection scheme. Although I was toying with the idea of pushing the second due date back, or the second penalty date back, I appreciate staff's perspective that it's really that first penalty date that probably has the largest impact. And I do, I don't think we have enough visibility that this is actually helping the folks that we thought it was going to. That, that stat, that 30%, or that it's the 30 of the largest Class Six business owners, represent 70% of the delayed payment, I think is pretty eye-opening, that this isn't actually necessarily helping the small business folks. And I know a number of the residential, in the residential category, a lot of mortgage payments will actually collect your utility payments throughout the year. And so remittance there is probably not being that impactful on residential tenants either. I'm so happy to revert back to where we were pre-COVID, and hopefully, this is a sign of brighter times to come.
Thank you. Counsel Herbert.
Thank you. I'll be supporting the motion. I think, I think the policy that we've worked on last few years didn't have the, the impact that we, I think we all hoped, as we were trying to find ways to positively impact things and mitigate the impact of COVID to, in the, in the community, and in this way through taxation. So I'm happy to go back to... and mitigate the impact of COVID to, in the, in the community, and in this way through taxation. So I'm happy to go back to to the before times with the caveat that if the public health measures and, and things get worse rather than better, as we all, as we all hope that they do, that we'll all have to be come back, come back to this table and discuss this topic potentially in a different light, but I hope we are not there. So I'll be supporting at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ben Gill.
Yeah, I'll support this as well. I am uncomfortable with the imbalance in the usage of this program towards the 30 largest Class Six businesses. I don't think that was our intent and where the most support is needed. Might consider splitting these up if we could have different schemes for different classes, but that might not be the best way to solve the underlying challenges anyway, so I think keep it simpler, and there may be other places to make adjustments if we need to make adjustments. So I'll support this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will also be supporting this. And particularly, it seems that what the data is showing is that the deferrals were actually based on a business decision rather than a need decision. And I think back to what a prof told us in university is, you know, if you're running a business, hold on to your money as long as possible, and that's what people are doing. And so it doesn't necessarily demonstrate a result from need. So I think I agree with the sentiment of counsel that we should start moving back to where we were before COVID and hope that works. Any further comment, counsel? I'll call a question. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. And that completes our agenda for the day. And so I am looking for a motion to terminate. Counsel Stoner, seconded by Mayor Elliott. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next meeting is not scheduled to start until 3:30.